Good evening, I'd like to call to order the council meeting of September 23rd. And if the clerk could please read the rule.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present, a quorum.
This is a time for meditation and the pledge. Does anyone have someone that they'd like us to remember during this time? Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like it if we could remember Brian Canty's family. This family is a staple in the Fabakers neighborhood. They're good friends of mine. Brian was killed in a motorcycle accident in the city, and it is a great loss to the family, the neighborhood, and the Street Riders Bike Club.
And Mayor Schor.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two people I'd like us to keep in mind. One, Barbara Kelly, who is the wife of Pastor Albert Kelly, whose funeral was over the weekend, and Dr. Barry Saltman, who many of us, I think almost all of us know from Air Free Medical, whose funeral was, or his celebration of life was this afternoon. Both wonderful people for the Lansing community.
Absolutely. All right, with that, if we could rise, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of September 9th.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the approval of the council proceedings from September 9th, 2019.
I have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
And we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmember comments. Are there any councilmember comments tonight? Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. The South Lansing Farmers Market this week is on Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00 at St. Casimir Church, and it is a special week because our vendors are cleaning out their closets, so it's going to be a farmer and flea market. So for every booth, it's there serving food and crafts and homegrown products and produce and whatever, they're also going to be getting rid of all of their stuff. So it's going to be like a garage sale farm market. So it's going to be twice as big as it normally is, and if you're in the market for somebody else's stuff, come on down. See ya.
All right, thank you. Other councilmember comments. Councilmember Garza, then Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to give a reminder, tomorrow is the Housing and Neighborhood Summit at North Elementary School. That's located 333 East Miller Road, Lansing, Michigan, and that is from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, so that is tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, then Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you. I just wanted to invite people to our Fourth Ward Constituent Contact Meeting. It's this fourth Saturday, and every fourth Saturday, at Gregory's, that's 2510 North MLK. It's really, I'm finding, it's really difficult to get around to everybody and to, you know, talk to many people as I can about the issues. And I do provide this opportunity, just like all the councilmembers, to come on out. Recently, it's been poor attendance, but, you know, summer's over, so it's time to get down to business. A few topics would be the budget priorities. That's probably the most important thing we do on council, direct the funds of the city to how our priorities, so if I could hear from you on that, that would be great. And also, the marijuana ordinance is going through, and that's been a hot topic, so I would like to hear on that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
Still a ways off, but I certainly want to ensure that people are marking their calendar for our Third Ward Constituent Contact Meeting that will take place October 12th, from 10 to 12 noon at 5825 Wise Road, which is the Alfred Schmitz South Side Community Center. We actually meet in the Sandy Allen Room, which is right off of the parking lot, ADA accessible, so we certainly see, or hope to see, everyone out again October 12th from 10 to 12 noon. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick note, save the date for October 5th. That will be our First Ward Contact Meeting. It will be held between 10 and noon at the Board of Water and Light, Rio Town Depot. Councilwoman Spitzley will be hosting that meeting, and she will have Chief Mackey from our new fire department chief there, and she will also have Judy Keeler, who is our treasurer and interim controller also. This is a good time to hear from another councilperson, their perspective, and to get her input, and I will remind you about this again, but if you can't get there at 10, come anyway. If you cannot stay until noon, please come, and your children are welcome. Thank you.
Hi there. Excuse me, are there other councilmember comments? Councilmember Jackson.
I just realized I omitted the time on Saturday. This coming fourth Saturday on the 28th, it's from 10 to noon at Gregory's, for anybody listening, and I've got to call now.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't going to say it this time, I was going to wait till next council meeting, but my council constituent contact meeting is the second Saturday of every month. It's at Fire Station 44, it's 1435 East Miller Road, and that is from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. So I provide refreshments and light snacks, so hope to see as many people as possible out there. Thank you.
Other councilmember comments. Just like to remind people that on Tuesday, this Tuesday is Rejuvenating South Lansing, we will be having the Ingham County Animal Control Director that will be there. That starts at 6:30 and is usually done by 8:30. The location is the South Side Community Center, and again, in the Sandy Allen Room, and that will be tomorrow night, so we welcome anybody out that would like to come out for that. And that takes us to the clerk. Before the clerk speaks, I do want to remind you that we have a lot of new people out there. If you want to speak, you do need to sign up on the blue sheet in the back for public comment for agenda items, which would be the public hearing if you're here for that. You do need to sign up for that. Thank you.
Thank you, President Wood. Just a couple of announcements. As most of you hopefully know, we have a city election coming up on November 5th. The absentee ballots that have already been requested, in fact, over 10,000 of them will be put in the mail on Friday of this week. So if you've already requested an absentee ballot, you should expect that in the mail Saturday or Monday or Tuesday of next week. And there is still plenty of time to request an absentee ballot. The constitutional amendment that was adopted last year allows any voter to vote by absentee ballot, so I encourage you to participate. You can also vote at the polls on Election Day, and the same constitutional amendment also extended voter registration up to, it's now 15 days before the election if you register any place other than in person at my office. But if you register in person at my office, you can either register for the first time or update your address up through and including on Election Day. So lots of opportunities to get involved in this upcoming city election. And I do want to give an opportunity now for people who have community events to give us a brief one-minute announcement of the time, place, and details of your event, so we are to community event announcements.
It's that time of year again. The Friends of Lansing Historic Cemetery holds their annual fall walking tour this Sunday at 3:00 PM inside Mount Hope Cemetery. Our theme this year is murder and mystery and mayhem. It's a fascinating tour, but due to the mature content, we recommend that children younger than 13 not come unless their parents feel that it's appropriate for them to be there. Again, Sunday, 3:00 PM, Mount Hope Cemetery, murder, mystery, and mayhem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, seeing none. Let me repeat or announce what President Wood already stated, that the council rules do require speakers to register for public comment, and for the first public comment, which includes all of the resolutions and ordinances as well as the public hearings. That's the blue sheet, and we're going to be picking that up in about another minute. So if you want to speak and didn't sign in, you are required to do so if you want to speak. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Schor.
Thank you. I have a few announcements. First, I want to thank everybody who helped with the incredible event in Churchill Downs on Saturday, big neighborhood cleanup. We actually have, I actually have stats on this one. Our neighborhood folks send us stats. We had 29 MSU Day of Service student volunteers, 10 Eastern High School National Honor Society students, and they picked up 20 bags of leaves and more than 10 bags of litter from the neighborhoods. 250 Churchill Downs households filled the Granger dump truck with bulk trash, and I'm told this is a pretty big dump truck. Mike Redding and the Churchill Downs neighborhood leaders were very involved. We had three of our City of Lansing staff, Andy Crawford, Ben Thompson, and Aaron Butendorf, who were there, part of this. Two of our City of Lansing neighborhoods interns were there, and one, I have listed one City of Lansing spouse. Also, Dave Weiner and the South Side Community Coalition were there, picking up trash from the Pleasant Grove Plaza merchants and the residents who reside on Simpkin Drive. So this is an all-around incredible, we knew what was going on, I didn't realize it was going to be this big, so congratulations to the Churchill Downs folks for doing that. I also want to give thanks to those who helped come and improve the playground equipment over at Maguire Park. If you have been there recently, go again, because now it looks even better. So I guess we get both wards in the South Side, but Maguire Park looks great. The mobile food pantry went very well. We had a lot of people there, including some of our UAW friends who were there because they are on strike and needed some assistance, so I'm glad we were able to assist our UAW families. I think Councilman Garza mentioned tomorrow is the Quarterly Neighborhood and Housing Resource Summit at North Elementary, so thank you for mentioning that, at 6:00 PM. The Annual Creative Placemaking Forum, hosted by the Arts Council, is all day Thursday at the Lansing Center, and I hear that is an incredible event every year. I went last year, but only for about an hour or so. And then the Neighborhood Roundtables are this week, 6:00 PM on Thursday and 8:00 AM on Friday, both at the Foster Community Center. And then, I'll take one more point of privilege. We talked about expungement. I know that that came up in some of the conversations, and it came up in the listening session we had maybe a month or two ago. Great event at Union today, saw Councilman Jackson there, helping out people to get through the expungement process. Tomorrow, I mentioned this at our Brown Bag Meeting, so half of you heard, I think, tomorrow I'll be testifying in support of legislation in the House of Representatives, sponsored by Graham Filler, Republican from DeWitt, on expanding expungement and helping out those especially who need it. And then on October 22nd, City of Lansing will be working on an expungement fair at the Hall of Justice, along with Judge Rick from Clinton County, where we're going to literally run people from A to Z, starting with meeting with the attorney right through the end to file the expungement paperwork. So I think we all know folks who have made mistakes, who need a second chance, can't get a job, can't, you know, can't do anything. I think that the expungement effort's going to be really good, and I'm glad that we all are supportive. At least everyone at this diocese I've talked to has extremely, has been extremely supportive, so I'll continue to push those for the city, and I thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and I know we do have a number of people who may not have been here at a meeting before, so I will just outline a couple of factors about the council rules. The rules allow for speakers to speak for up to three minutes, and the first period is on legislative matters, which includes the public hearings, the items listed on the consent agenda, and the ordinances for introduction and passage. And I know a number of people are here, both on the corridor authorities and the noise permit, both of those items are public hearing and eligible for discussion during this three-minute period. I also want to point out that the council's rules prohibit the audience from making displays such as applause during public comments. This is the time for the speakers who have signed in to speak and to create a comfortable atmosphere for everyone. The council rules prohibit applause. And with that, let me read into the record the public hearings, and then we can move forward. Number one, in consideration of noise special permit, Continental Ferguson Lansing LLC Red Cedar Development to perform earthwork 24 hours a day, seven days a week, from October 1st, 2019 through November 30th, 2019, and for construction activities from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and on Saturdays from 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM, beginning December 1st, 2019, for the duration of the project. Number two, in consideration of intent to create Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority. Number three, in consideration of intent to create South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority. And number four, in consideration of Z5, 2019, rezoning of 521 West Hillsdale Street from DM4 Residential District to D1 Professional Office District.
Okay, with that, the first public hearing, I have Councilmember Washington address, and I do believe the applicants are in the audience and could make their way up to the table at this time.
Thank you, Madam President. The first public hearing we have is for the consideration of the noise special permit for the Red Cedar Project. The developer has asked for a noise waiver for up to December 1st for 24 hours a day. It is not their intent to do work 24 hours a day, as even the lighting wouldn't permit such things, but this is just in case there is an issue with inclement weather or other obstructions. So with that, I'm going to ask that Christopher Strokowski address this issue, because I know there's been a lot of concern with people, I think have the belief that there's going to be this outrageous noise 24 hours a day with all of this light. So if you could address this, I would appreciate it.
If you could make sure that the green light is on and that the mic is close to you, so that the audience as well as council can hear you.
Thank you, and thank you for taking my time today, or your time today. Our intent on this particular request is to sort of put the project in a position to be successful. We have no idea what's going to happen in the weather in Michigan for the next six weeks. It's Michigan. It's possible we could have three days of rain or five days of rain, and we are adherent to our schedule of construction. And those requirements of getting eight hours or 10 hours or 12 hours of work within the regular workday could very well be delayed, and it is not our intent, nor is our request to work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that this is a typical request of any project of this scope and scale to have requested from council for approval, that if circumstances dictate, we would actually be able to make up time for weather delays. That being said, we don't expect, we do not anticipate, and I asked Jason earlier, did this happen on other projects, and he was not able to give me a project where this actually took place. That being said, we have worked with council, we have worked with community members, we have worked with the mayor's office, we have worked with just about anybody that would come to any type of meetings and discussions that we would have about this project, and we would want to adhere to whatever those sort of responsibilities are for us as a developer, and what's going on with the community that is affecting.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Washington.
Madam President, I would also like to add that certainly the City of Lansing, I can speak for us, and I imagine for the developer, it is our intent to be good neighbors. So for the area that is adjacent to Michigan State, we have absolutely no intention of being a bad neighbor, and we definitely want to work hand in hand with the surrounding community.
Thank you. The next public hearing, I have you, Jason, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just a couple of things.
Go right ahead.
First off, I wanted to thank the mayor and his staff. As you know, we've been working on this for six, seven years now, and since, I'll say, May, we have all, across the board, had some real heavy lifts between the mayor and his city attorney's office and the Public Service Department. There have been a significant amount of meetings. We've all been working weekends throughout with the intent to try to accelerate the schedule as much as possible. Obviously, there's challenges associated with the weather, and specifically, we cannot predict the conditions. The intent, working with our contractors, is basically to limit the work hours Monday through Saturday from 7:00 to 7:00. And then, the first level of safety net, if you will, would be to be able to work on Sundays, and then, in the event of significant, you know, inclement weather, and I'm talking multiple days, and as part of this first phase of work, we anticipate 25 working days for our contractor between now and November 1st. So the challenge are such as if we have six, let's say, rain days, we're already up against the wall on how this works. The challenges are obviously to try to meet that schedule and deliver everything that we've committed to as part of the community development agreement that we have with the city. That being said, I want to just reinforce that, you know, last week, we met with Michigan State, and certainly understand the students' concerns relative to, you know, midterms are coming up in mid-October, and then also the challenges that they may have with their regular testing days and things of that nature. And it's our intent to be very sensitive to that, and we've asked Michigan State to provide us dates of those midterms, because then we would back down off that schedule to not impact those students and their schedule. I have a daughter that's a freshman at Miami University of Ohio, and I certainly respect that importance of the study hours and things of those nature, of that nature, to make sure they have successful school years. So with that in mind, we want to make sure that everybody understands, to your point about the importance of being good neighbors, we want to reinforce that our intent is to each week deliver a schedule of anticipated work hours based on the conditions that have occurred up to date. We'll have our contractor reinforce that, and we'll be distributing that to the city's staff, and then also to Michigan State, to say, these are the hours that we're anticipating based on what happened previously. And I mean specifically, if we have a great week and no weather problems, we will make sure that everybody understands that our schedule is advancing in a positive way, and we'll reduce that. I, you know, I don't want to jinx ourselves and say that there's zero chance that we'll be working 24 hours a day, but in the event we get to, I don't know, October 28th, and we've lost six days, we may need to put an extra effort in to close out the gap. This will not be all month at 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It might be one or two, and that is even suspect. So I want to again thank the staff for everything that they've done in city council with all the efforts, and I feel like we've, we'll do our best to not impact negatively our neighbors.
I have Christopher, and then I have Vice President Spatafor.
But I also want to say that this has been an ongoing dialogue, that the idea that we would build a $270 million development between Lansing and East Lansing, Lansing Township, that we have never not met with anyone to talk about what conditions are going on at the site, what are the expectations, and not only what are the concerns. And we will continue to do that to this day. We always have done that, and we'll continue that moving forward.
Vice President Spatafor, and then Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, guys, welcome back. Just a quick question, what does it look like if you do work 24 hours a day? I mean, from a lighting perspective, from a noise perspective, you're talking earth moving, so what kind of equipment is that? You're not talking pounding pylons in the ground and that kind of stuff.
No, no. I mean, it's strictly earthwork, and I know when we met with Michigan State, the big thing was the beeping that you might occur, that the safety mechanism on the back of equipments when they back up. You know, in the event that occurs, and again, very slim chance, but in the event it does, we will make sure our work occurs on the western half of the site, up on Michigan Avenue, so to stay away from the students and other residents even over close to Clifford. So the idea that you're going to see a big football field of lights, let's say, that's not intent, and that would, you know, in our expectation is not going to happen. If we're really focused on that first phase, which just for order of magnitude is an import of, I'll say, 125,000 yards of dirt, in significance, that's about a 16-foot-high pile, that's roughly about 400 by 300 foot wide, so just as order of magnitude of earth that's being moved is substantial. So the reality is, we think we can get it done in typical work hours, and, but again, if it starts raining, I mean, we're at the mercy of Mother Nature.
Two more questions, if I may.
Go ahead.
My second question, or it's more of a comment, is just keep in mind, this is a student, the resident population by nature is transient there due to the, I mean, most of the people that were there weren't there last year, didn't sit through the public hearing, since it's all that stuff. So I appreciate your commitment to continuing to work with residents over there, just bear that in mind, that Lansing residents, the East Lansing residents, and a lot of the township residents that are around that area aren't permanent residents for the most part. Certainly, there are some, so some were involved in this process from the beginning, but there is a lot of transient nature due to a student population being heavy there.
Absolutely. I mean, we've been really a bit dependent on Michigan State and making sure they're communicating, and I know that they had reached out to the staff to assist with that process, and, you know, we'll continue to make sure that the appropriate people at Michigan State have that information. That way, we know and they know exactly how the project's progressing.
Then my third question isn't for the folks here, but maybe someone at this table. Is there an example of a project in the city that's been granted a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week waiver you could point to?
Yes, when they've done Martin Luther King both times, we, and we just recently gave them 24 hours, and that was for the potential of a two-week time that they could be working 24 hours to remove the asphalt and lay new asphalt down.
Well, somebody who traverses that drive twice a day, they aren't using that option, I can promise you.
Counselmember Jackson, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. You guys mentioned that you had reached out to MSU to try to figure out what the exam schedules were. Have they provided that information to you?
I just run into nonchalant some of the people out at Michigan State on a daily basis, and it's something that we've had as an ongoing dialogue, and we continue to have that. Is it formal? No, but we've exchanged emails. Jason's on that email, I'm on that email. We do understand when midterms are.
So you do know when the midterms and all of that stuff is, though, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And to Jason's point, we would adhere to, obviously, those concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I appreciate you willing to, your openness, but one thing about being a Michigander is that you can pretty much count on bad and inclement weather. And if it's your schedule that you're worried about 25 work hours, days, I mean, wouldn't you make a schedule that's more anticipatory of inclement weather? And also, since you don't expect to exercise many of these options except for a worst-case scenario, and you know midterm times, for example, couldn't you still make it more restrictive so it's not like, oh, we just passed 24 hours a day, when you're not going to use it? Can't you make it like guaranteed to stop at midnight, at least so that students would know that they had, they could at least have then on the worst-case scenario? And also, couldn't you put the midterm dates in there? That's the exception within what we're doing.
Yeah, so let's talk about that, because one of the things that we are doing as a way to offset that risk, and I think you're talking to the weather, is that there are engineering technical things that you can do that are premiums that we're going to take on as part of a project. Specifically, what we're doing is taking on chemical additives into our, into our earth and material. That adds probably about a 25% premium to the project, so the intent is to offset some of that risk, potentially of going 24 hours, seven days a week, by increasing our costs associated with the earthwork operations. So, you know, there, and I'm not a geotechnical expert, but what we're doing is we're adding some lime and other cementous-type material into the earth and material to harden it, even in the event of it being wet. And if we actually lose, I'll say, days, that we are also paying a premium to have material imported from dry sites to help offset. So to say that we actually will ever lose a day is probably a bit of a stretch, but we'll still continue to make efforts to offset some of those concerns that you have. It really is not a goal to use those hours.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. So did I hear correctly, the concerns for Michigan State was the backup alarms on your vehicles?
Yeah, lighting and the noise, I think, are the two big things. So specifically, the Specifically, the safety component that comes with the beeping.
Okay, well, so, according to OSHA, 29 CFR, Part 1926.601 of the Construction Safety and Health Regulations, no employer should use any motor vehicle, motor vehicle equip, excuse me, equipment having an obstructive view unless the vehicle has a reverse signal alarm, or if the vehicle is backed up with an observer signals. So, if you were not to have the alarms on your car, you could have somebody behind you spotting you. So that's one option.
Yeah, certainly agree with that. We've also talked to the contractor about moving in a straight line as a means to logistically improve that situation, so, you know, obviously, when we get to that point, or if we get to that point, we would discuss that, but again, the intent is not to have that problem. And that's part of the purpose of the communication on a weekly basis, even more if we're starting to get to a compressed schedule where we would say, hey, these are the days that we're looking at, you know, if needed, and then, and try to identify that in advance for those folks.
With that, we will move on to Councilmember Hussein, who has the next three public hearings.
The first two public hearings that are coming out of development and planning deal with the establishment of respective corridor improvement authorities for two corridors within the city of Lansing that really have experienced a significant amount of deterioration, I think, over the last several years. So the first, regarding a corridor improvement authority, they are allowable per state statute, and the primary purpose is to reverse deterioration, to promote the redevelopment within the district, and the, you know, kind of economic promotion within the district, or the development area, I should call it. The establishment of the corridor improvement authority really is phase one. So there will be a populating of the board that will come back before council at some point. There will be a development plan that is created that will come back before council at some point, and then, if we truly empower these corridor improvement authorities with what I believe they need to intensively support some of our corridors that really connect some of our front-door neighborhoods, we're also going to approve a TIF plan, or at least be asked at some point to approve a TIF plan. So with that being said, the first corridor improvement authority deals with, and it's being called the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority, this deals with North Grand River. And the development district stretches from Frenette Road to Old US 27, let me see, on East North Street, and includes all land found within 500 feet of the center line of North Grand River. And then with regards to the second one, which is South MLK, the development district would stretch from the railroad track south of Victor Avenue to I-96. And then the third public hearing coming out of development and planning deals with a request for a rezone at 521 West Hillsdale Street. This would be to rezone that particular property from DM4 Residential District to D1 Professional Office District. We're fortunate enough to have Mr. Shawn Watson with us tonight. He was here the night that we introduced this and set the public hearing, so I'm not going to ask him to come down into the well. But with regards to the reason for request, this is to allow, to allow, sorry, for his law, it's actually his personal attorney, to actually be able to conduct his law practice at that particular location. In terms of surrounding land use and zoning, we always consider that when we look at a rezone. To the north, we have single and two-family residential in terms of land use. It is Zoned DM4 Residential. To the south, we have two-family residential in terms of land use, and it is Zoned DM4 Residential. Both to the east and the west, we have vacant parcels, and both of those parcels are actually Zoned DM1 Professional Office. In terms of the master plan, this property, the subject property, is designated as Downtown Mixed Use Center Edge. It was the surrounding land use, the zoning, the master plan, that both the zoning administrator and the planning board took a look at when vetting this particular request, and they both have supported this request.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hussein. And for anyone that is here for the corridor improvement public hearings, this is one of two of them that we will be having. Because of the fact that there was a misunderstanding in the first public hearing, we have scheduled another one, so we will have this again up before us, so, thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Okay, just one last thing before we get to public comment. We did find some car keys. If you lost your car keys, the council staff person outside of the room has them. And then on to public comment, the first speaker is Maureen Brinker, followed by Bradley Johnson.
Before you start, I also have letters, email letters, that came in to all council members. There is a series of them, all of these that were requesting denial of the public hearing that I want to make sure get entered into the record. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Shore and Lansing City Council Members. My name is Maureen Brinker, and I am a Township Trustee in Brownstown Township. Brownstown Township is a township in southeast Michigan on the shores of Lake Erie. I am a proud MSU graduate, and my son currently attends MSU and lives in the Brody Complex. For these reasons, the issue regarding the noise ordinance waiver is very important to me. Imagine being so exhausted and not being able to sleep for two months. Imagine the constant construction noise, the heavy machinery, large trucks, jackhammers, the loud beeping of trucks backing up. Now imagine it nonstop, never-ending, all day, every day, disrupting your sleep, not allowing you to concentrate or study, being unable to open your windows in your non-air-conditioned dorm room to let in the cool, crisp, refreshing fall air. That's what your yes vote would do to thousands of MSU students in the Brody Complex and Campus Village Apartments. Students who work hard to pay for a quality education at Michigan State, students who are busy with classes, homework, jobs, and extracurricular activities such as volunteer positions, involvement in university activities, MSU clubs and athletics, and who deserve to come home to a quiet place to sleep at night. The proposal to waive the noise ordinance to allow construction work 24 hours a day is a terrible idea, regardless of intent. It will be extremely disruptive to and cause harmful quality-of-life issues for thousands of people. It will negatively affect the general health and well-being of so many people, and it is wrong. As an elected official myself, I understand the need to balance development and progress with the best interests of our residents. In this case, our future's greatest asset are students. Please don't dismiss them. In this particular case, when a city council decision could detrimentally impact so many people, the well-being and general welfare of the affected East Lansing and Lansing residents who are your constituents certainly is the most important factor to consider and an important reason to not waive this noise ordinance. Please, do the right thing and vote no on this terrible proposal. Give our residents and students a break at night. Allow them to sleep. We are not against progress and development, and realize all the benefits that new businesses bring to a city, but this development must be balanced with the best interests of the affected residents. We mustn't make our residents suffer because of it. If you approve this proposal, your residents will suffer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bradley Johnson, and then Debbie Ramsey.
Hi, my name is Bradley Johnson. I'm a citizen of Lansing, but I'm also the community manager for Campus Village in East Lansing, where a student housing community, we're adjacent to the project, that wants the variance. And I just want to say that my community and all the surrounding communities, not including the dorms, there's 1,500 students that are directly affected by that, and I'm here speaking on the behalf of myself, my residents, and their parents. We're all deeply concerned about the request for the variance. It's actually going to be happening 12 feet, 7 inches away from the back of my building, actually the back of one of my apartment windows. So they will be able to see that and hear everything. There's no doubt about it. And this is the matter about one of the trustees of Michigan State wanting to get his project done on time, and it's not a matter of making sure that Lansing gets the tax money that they need sooner than later. This is a matter of the health and safety, not only my residents, but is also a matter of the health and safety of nearly 1,500 students living in the apartments right next to the project. And that doesn't even, as I said before, include the dorms, which have probably just about another 1,500. So these are students. They are going to college to better themselves, their families, and our world, their future, and by allowing this ongoing constructions, you are disrupting their lives. I could cite countless city ordinances, you'll be breaking East Lansing by allowing this, but I'm guessing that you guys already know that. I could stand up here and talk about how you, how construction noise is harmful to hearing, and I could stand up here and talk about how important it is for students to study in peace or sleep, but I don't even need to do that. This is all common sense. I made everyone in my community aware of this nonsense, students and their parents, and I know a lot of them, and I see as you got, did send you guys your concerns, and I hope those will be read, and they will be listened to. And after listening to them, I know they had some counters about it, but my biggest concerns were that, were that the counters were a lot of possibly, or worst-case scenario, were a lot of things like that, but I know developers, and I feel like, and I know everybody does too, it's always the worst-case scenario, and it always happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Debbie Ramsey, and then Erin Stevens.
Hi, I'm Debbie Ramsey, and I am the mom of a resident of Campus Village. I appreciate the opportunity to come and be heard at the public hearing here. And I just want to read a little bit of the letter that was taken from Continental Ferguson, Lansing, by Mr., written by Mr. Hoxstock. It says, "I am writing to request extended work hours to meet the construction schedule for the project. We need the following work hours to have the possibility of delivering the project in accordance with the development agreement." And it specifies the dates of September 23rd to November 30th, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And then it also specifies December 1st beyond 7 to 7, Monday through Friday, with Saturday 8 to 5. It goes on to say, "The extended work hours are required in the initial phase due to the significant earthwork operation needed to prepare the building pads, removing them from the floodplain, and to prepare the site for the forthcoming winter conditions, ensuring the vertical construction continues." So, if the argument is that this is a safety net, why are those words not in there, would be my first presentation? I would like to see the word "safety net" contained within if this is truly the intent. I'll go on to say that, you know, we encourage our students to, you know, walk the walk and talk the talk, and I'm going to reference a Bible verse, actually. It is, "Do unto others as you would have done unto you," also known as the golden rule for those who may not be religious. In layman's terms, what would council members, mayor, developers, would you like your sons, daughters, grandchildren, or even yourself to be inflicted with the possibility, not necessarily nonstop anymore, I understand that, but we're basing it on what could happen client-wise, or climate-wise? Even if it's two days of a week, does anybody want to be potentially disrupted with the light and the noise pollution due to construction that's taking place? I just can't, I can't even possibly fathom how that is even a consideration. The timeline has to be pushed back. It's a project. These are humans. We're talking buildings versus humans, development, moving earth versus human beings. And I'll give you some other options in terms of other ways that you may be able to accomplish the goal of the project if you do encounter these climate delays. Why can you not hire, if these climates, rain prohibits you from proceeding as you'd like, why can you not hire a larger crews on the days that you are working? Add more manpower. Bring in more backhoes. Do what you need to do to move the earth that way. Extend your, potentially extend your hours instead of 7 to 7? Is that my beeper bumper?
Thank you.
Or my beeper, sorry. Please, please say no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Stevens, and then Loretta Stanaway.
Hello, Mayor Shore, honorable councilmembers, Ms. Harkins. I have the distinct pleasure of serving with many of you on different boards and commissions throughout the region. For those of you who I have not met, my name is Erin Stevens. I was the first student elected to the East Lansing City Council in over 35 years. I served very, very proudly in that position, and I appreciate all of your service and being here on a Monday night for what will probably be a longer meeting. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about the noise waiver, and you have heard from some parents, and I have heard from my constituents, which is why I am here. And I will tell you, as a recent student, no matter what midterm schedule somebody has laid out in passing conversation, midterms happen all the time. You might have a class that has three midterms throughout their entire term, you might have one that only has one at a specified time, but either way, as a recent graduate, I can tell you that hearing that train at 4:00 in the morning definitely woke me up, and I can almost guarantee that hearing construction sounds next to the Brody Complex would as well. I know that you've heard from a lot of parents, I've also heard from a lot of neighborhood residents and neighborhood adjacent to this project, as well as students that are actually here in the audience today. And I'll just kind of echo what people have been saying. If this is a timeline issue, amend the brownfield or the development agreement. That is, again, my suggestion, it is obviously up to your purview. I will say that while outreach might have been done to Michigan State University, it was not done to myself, or I believe other council members that I discussed it with in the city of East Lansing. I would have liked to have known, just because when I got questions of it, and you obviously all know this feeling, when you don't have an answer for a constituent, it's not the best feeling in the world. And then, you know, to be advocating here, I understand your job is very, very difficult because I do it myself, but I think this decision can be one that if it is of need, then it makes, or you make the decision when it is of need. If this is said to be a last-case scenario, then make it a last-case scenario. There are ways to amend the development and brownfield agreement if that timeline doesn't coincide with what they are expecting, and there are also ways to amend hours to maybe go up to midnight even. That's still be a detriment to those students, because even if it's not midterms, it's another class, or it's another job, or it's another work. I worked my way through college, and I can tell you, showing up at 9:30 and wanting to go to sleep is just as significant as somebody else showing up at 2:00 in the morning, because I had to work at 5:00 in the morning the next day. So it's significant. And while this impact might seem minimal because of the timeframe, I can tell you that during that time in a busy semester, for a busy college student, it is very, very important. And I will also touch on our neighbors and our neighborhoods, and making sure that they can protect their silence as well being our constituents. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, and then Eric Altman.
First off, let me back up a step and say that the city should never have allowed work to begin on property that has not yet been sold. Have you learned nothing after letting the Drain Commissioner cut hundreds of trees off this property years ago, reducing its property value and its environmental value in the interim? In a 24/7 noise ordinance variation is ridiculous. I'm sorry, I think that, you know, everyone here has the best intentions and means well, but from experience and many years here at council, talking about various different things where promises were made, I can tell you that nine times out of 10, the intention may have been good, but the promises were not kept. So forgive me if I don't trust. 500 feet is what was given for notice from the public service or whoever it was that sent out letters to people. 500 feet radius of the work zone. 500 feet equals a tenth of a mile. I hear football games at Everett, which is 1.1 mile away. I hear fireworks from the Lugnut Stadium, which is 3.8 miles away. I hear the train on the tracks, which is 1.3 miles away. And I hear traffic on the highway, which is 1.8 miles away. A 500-foot notice zone is ludicrous. As others have said, students don't necessarily conform to a 24/7, seven-day-a-week work schedule as you want to have your noise waiver. A lot of students sleep during the day and work at night. They do a combination thereof. When you think they should be asleep, they may be awake, they may be studying, they may be at work, who knows? 24/7, whether it's intended to be used or not, should not be allowed, and you're not even talking yet about friendship manner. You're not even talking yet about the dorms. You're not even talking yet about the flower pot neighborhoods around this development issue. And there's been no mention whatsoever, other than by myself, of wildlife. What does this do to the wildlife? I mean, it's bad enough that they're going to be disposed, or displaced, I should say, but for those wildlife creatures that aren't displaced, they're going to have no rest. I mean, it's just so stressful that it's virtually, it amounts to a death sentence. So I think that for these reasons and others you'll hear yet tonight, you need to be voting no on this with no other choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eric Altman, and then Anna Cordana.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the noise waiver request for the Ferguson project. I'm Eric Altman. I serve as the mayor pro tem for the city of East Lansing. I believe that we will be in touch with an official communication over the city manager's signature soon on this issue. I am here representing myself only to ask that you deny the waiver request. To be good neighbors, you have to recognize that you have neighbors. I've heard very little mention, except from the previous speaker from the podium, of two East Lansing neighborhoods that are adjacent to this project site. One is the Flower Pot Red Cedar Neighborhood, and the other is the Chesterfield Hills Neighborhood. I ask that you give the same consideration to these neighborhoods of ours that you would give to yours. If the roles were reversed, we would certainly do the same, and I believe we have a record to prove it. We all want this project to proceed and to be completed sooner rather than later, but it's not the fault of these neighborhoods that this project has taken longer than people hoped, and it's not fair that they should bear the cost. Lastly, I would note that we and our school board in East Lansing have approved about $500 million in development projects the last couple of years, of which we're very proud. And somehow, all these projects managed to get completed without this kind of waiver. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Anna Cardona, and then Jason Hackstock.
Good evening, Mayor Shore and city council members. I am Anna Cardona, Anna Luisa Cardona, and I'm here to ask you to please vote no on the wa-noise waiver. I'm an educator and an active senior who lives at 1243 Daisy Lane in Red Se-, in the Red Cedar Neighborhood in East Lansing. You may not notice our neighborhood as you drive along Michigan Avenue, and you might imagine that round-the-clock construction noise would not be disruptive to residents, to non-transient residents, but longtime 30-year residents like myself. However, we are south of the Red Cedar, south of Kalamazoo, and we will be impacted by this noise. I've lived in the Red Cedar Neighborhood for 30 years. Our neighborhood is made up of primarily single-family homes along with the MSU's 1855 Place, all of which are occupied by families, adults, seniors, K-12 students, not just MSU students. Over the years, our neighborhood has been negatively impacted by increased traffic on the 127-496 interchange and traff-, train traffic on Trowbridge and Harrison. Noise travels further along our shared floodplain, making East Lansing's Red Cedar Neighborhood effectively a catch basin for all of the noise from all of these sources. I expect a long-term impact, not just the two months, but the three years during which construction is going to be happening. And I also hear the fireworks and the train stations and the traffic on 496. I'm also concerned about noise that is not just in your ears, but it's vibrations in the earth because they're move, they're earth movers. That's what they're going to be doing. And they're going to be pounding that earth to get it down. And when a truck goes through my neighborhood, my house vibrates and shakes. So I know that there will be vibrations in that earth that you're moving that will flow over into my neighborhood. The animals will feel it, and I will feel it also. I'm surprised and alarmed that our neighborhood association has not been communicated with. All it would take is a few steps back to see that there is more than students directly impacted by the actions you're going to take. I think that you will be setting a precedent for additional waivers in the future, not just the two months, because they're starting out behind schedule. Three years of work, we're going to continue to have weather, and that schedule is going to continue, and they're going to be back here for other waivers. So I say, don't open the precedent. Stop it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jason.
Yeah, that's me. You can take that off.
Oh, okay. Lydia Melhose, followed by Diane Wing.
Hello, council. My name is Lydia Melhose. I'm a senior at MSU. I'm an environmental studies major, and I have been living at the Oaks Apartments, which is directly next to Campus Village, which was the other gentleman that spoke. So I'm right there in front of it as well, and this is my third year at the Oaks, so I'm very familiar with that area. It has become a beautiful ecosystem, and I see wildlife every day, from deer to groundhog to cardinals, to all sorts of wildlife. I've even used that area as a area of classroom. I've had a lab that has been taken out there, and we've learned about all the flora and fauna there. I also would like to mention that it does flood immensely in the springtime for months, and there's ducks and everything, and it's, I don't know what they plan to do when their construction is underwater for months. The noise, even the Michigan Avenue construction right now, I ha-, I can say that I've been woken up every morning already from a beeping backing-up truck, and it's already driving me crazy. So yeah, and I'd just like to mention that, yes, we don't always just sleep at night. We're sleeping at all times of the day, and that's what we always want to do is sleep. And it's, nothing is more frustrating than not being able to. And the midterms, I can also back up that there is no specific date for them to be. It isn't just, okay, October 21st and 2nd is, everyone takes midterms. They are sporadically spread out. Every kid is going through a huge midterm exam, project paper, all the time, constantly. So midterm or not, it's, I-I really, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Diane Wing, and then Caroline Burdick.
Hi, my name is Diane Gracia Wing. I am a resident of the Chesterfield Hills Neighborhood in East Lansing. This is not necessarily a transient neighborhood. I'm a 21-year resident of Chesterfield Hills. This neighborhood is the closest East Lansing neighborhood to Red Cedar Park. We are just north of Red Cedar, off of Michigan Avenue. Our closest neighbors are Campus Village, who you've already heard from, Brody Hall, who you'll probably hear from some Brody residents as well. If you'd like to be a good neighbor, you're kind of off to a rocky start. To my knowledge, nobody from the Chesterfield Hills Neighborhood Association has been communicated with. I'm, I'm hearing also from the previous speaker that the Red Cedar Flower Part, Flower Pot Neighborhood to the south of Red Cedar has also not been communicated with. I'd like to specifically thank council member Erin Stevens and mayor pro tem Eric Altman for their comments. On behalf of the affected residents, both transient and permanent residents of East Lansing, please consider all of our peaceable enjoyment of our residents, whether we're transient, whether we're permanent, whether we're seniors, or whether we're MSU students. We all deserve a quiet place to live, to sleep, to rest, to study. I work from my home, so guess what? 24 hours a day means my workplace, as well as my living time, is going to be impacted 24 hours a day. Please take into account all of the residents that are within the impacted area and vote no on this waiver. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Caroline Burdick, and then, Burdick, and then Haley Genau.
Hi, I'm Caroline. I'm a student at MSU, I'm a junior. I live at the Oaks, the property next to Campus Village and near Brody Neighborhood. And my window backs up right to the property that's intended to be developed. I've enjoyed living in this space, and every day I'm thankful to be one of the only properties for student housing in the area with a view of nature and from, from a property that was once a golf course. I often see deer laying down to sleep at night in this quiet, safe field that has come, that has come of this old golf course. It's a sanctuary that's hard to come by in this area. You rarely see deer on MSU campus or in the residential neighborhoods. I'm disappointed to have learned very last minute that this space is being appropriated from the wildlife that I've come to enjoy living near. But I understand that this project is underway, and this is not why I'm here today. I've just become more disappointed to hear that the development project has no regard for the current residents, transient and permanent, of the surrounding properties. And as you've acknowledged, they are majority students. So the project, as we've discussed, has asked to operate 24 hours a day, six days a week, and then 8:00 to 5:00 on Saturdays, I believe. I understand that, like, the hope is that you won't have to work, but it, it's kind of hard to believe that you'd be asking for such a waiver if it weren't a serious possibility. It seems very irrational to ask for such a thing without the, the real possibility of it. And as a student working two jobs and with a full credit load, quiet time for me is very hard to come by, and my only escape from my work and school life is my apartment, and that's the only time I have to sleep and study. So my days often start at 6:30 a.m. and end at 11:00 p.m. at night with clubs and activities and my job and school. And I know this is the case for many other students who populate the Oaks as well as the other apartments. So I'm just asking the council to think about the population in the surrounding area. We are majority students. And let me remind the council that we are the development project's future clients. But it seems irrational that you would intend to start off with your future clientele on the wrong foot by imposing such, such a schedule of construction that will disrupt our lives. I'm asking, out of respect for the student population, to respect their scarce and sacred quiet time and to leave operating for during the work hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Haley Genau, followed by Brendan Boyle.
Good evening. My name's Haley Genau, and for background, I also live in the Oaks Apartments, and my window also backs right up to the Red Cedar Development. I work a job as well, and my day often begins at the crack of dawn, thanks to the Michigan Ave construction that's going on. So yes, I'm woken up by that every day. And then I have to go to class, then I have to work, and then I have to go to club meetings, and then in the evening, I have to study, have to study for grad school tests, and then maybe get some sleep at night. And so as you can imagine, even if this is just a background, just a backup, there's really no safeguard in this because you are allowing them to work 24/7. That's what this is, and so that's my issue with this, is there is no safeguard. These are empty premises. And the midterm schedule, as far as that goes, it is true that we do not have set midterm dates. And also, it's not just midterms for students. It's every day that students are grinding and working extremely hard because college is expensive, and we have to have jobs and every other thing. And I think it's important that we recognize that student lives and the permanent residents' lives are important, and that you're tearing down in a very environmental space where it's very hard to come by, by Michigan State at this point. And I just don't think it's fair that students and permanent residents are going to be, like, very much affected by this, and that nobody seems to care. I understand that development is important, but in the end, what's really important is developing young minds, and for students to be so stressed out, they can't sleep at night because construction and every other thing is just disappointing. So I really ask you to consider voting no for waiving the noise waiver.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Brendan Boyle.
Good evening, Mayor Shore, city council members. I too live in the Red Cedar Neighborhood. We're acoustically blessed with 496 and 127 traffic, and we've mostly forgiven the guy who blows the train whistle at 4:00 in the morning. He probably figures he's awake. We should be awake too. The people that are affected are not only students and families, their children, and there are people with dogs, and dogs seem to alert everybody when they hear a noise that they're not used to. So there's going to be a lot of sleep deprivation happening for the sake of keeping people on schedule. And as somebody said earlier, this is Michigan, you know? When you make your plan, when you make your schedule, you need to anticipate delays and not schedule too tightly, and, and then ask the neighborhoods to make up for it with their discomfort. So I respectfully ask you to vote no on the waiver.
All right, thank you.
And Mayor, thank you for working with Tuesday Toolman.
All right, thank you. That was our final speaker. So we are to the referral of the public hearings. Number one, the noise special permit.
We'll go back to general services.
Number two, the Lansing Gateway Corridor Improvement Authority.
Development and planning.
Number three, the South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority.
Development and planning.
And number four, Z52019.
Development and planning.
And we are now to the consent agenda.
For those of you that are in the audience, there will be no action taken this evening on the noise waiver. This was just the public hearing. This will be brought back up at next week's meeting on September 30th. Thank you. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I would like to pull item two off the consent agenda that is the Committee of Development and Planning items leaving on the agenda. Number one, a tribute and recognition of the Lansing School District Superintendent's Retirement. And number three, the Committee on General Services, Claim Disposition, Claim 1722.
All right. We have a motion on the tribute and the General Services claim. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Then we are to resolutions by the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Hussein.
Councilmembers, you have a resolution before you to set a public hearing in consideration of obsolete property rehabilitate rehabilitation district. The public hearing would be October 14th at 7:00 p.m. The applicant in this case is ANC Holdings. We actually have two respective members of this entity with us. I believe we have Joan Nelson as well as Jonathan Lum. They are going to come down and talk about, first, the, the redevelopment project. This actually pertains to the, again, the property at 1611 East Kalamazoo Street. They would like to do some, some significant rede-, redevelopment and rehab of the building by adding a third story along Kalamazoo. They want to add three-story structures at both the east and the west end of this, of the subject property. This would be to allow for 30,000 square feet of residential and about 20,000 square feet of commercial. But again, we do have the, the applicants on hand. The reason why they are requesting a district today as opposed to a certificate is they would like to start with some of the demo work in the fall. They are currently working, my understanding, they are currently working on the Oprah Certificate application. But again, they want to get the work started. They don't want to jeopardize their ability to come back before this body to ask for a subsequent certificate. So with that being said, I'm going to open it up to Ms., Mrs. Joan Nelson. Thank you.
Thank you.
And be, before you start, Joan, in your packet is a preservation and creating place in Lansing's East Side, so that is available for you to take a look at as well. Thank you.
And I, I believe that we sent a PowerPoint presentation as well that includes those same slides. Want to thank you all for an opportunity to really briefly let you know what is happening with Allen Place and what we are proposing. Most of you know that Allen Neighborhood Center is a 20-year-old community development agency, serving the northeast quadrant of the city, known as the East Side. Over the last 20 years, we have developed programs in health and housing and food security and food access. Many of you probably know Allen Neighborhood Center for our farmer's market or the Hunter Park Garden House, our incubator kitchen program, or the Mid-Michigan Food Hub that we operate out of the center. We've occupied this same space for 20 years, but we have not owned it. Not for, for lack of interest. We first approached the out-of-state owner in 2005, and he simply was not ready to sell this complex. We, on the other hand, he was also not able to maintain it and, and keep people in it. And so last year, we found ourselves in a, being housed in a complex- And so last year, we found ourselves in a, being housed in a complex where the entire second floor was empty and most of the first floor as well. Left in the complex was Allen Neighborhood Center in the great middle swath of the complex and the Happen Dance Lansing Studio. At that time, the owner indicated a willingness to sell. And at about the same time, an extremely generous benefactor stepped forward and loaned us the money to purchase the complex. And that happened in August. We had had a vision about what could happen with this pretty catalytically located complex for a long, long time, for many years. And we also knew that as a small nonprofit, we would need a partner to do this kind of development. And so we approached Sineer Corporation, a nonprofit affordable housing development organization headquartered in Rio Town and with an eight-state presence. Sineer Solutions, Sineer Corporation was, embraced the partnership, and they linked us with Sineer Solutions, which is the development arm of the Sineer Corporation. And so we've been working with those folks ever since. Before we can begin to create Allen Place, which is to be a comprehensive community hub offering 29 age-friendly, mixed-income housing units as well as additional food-focused businesses on the front of the 1600 block of East Kalamazoo, we knew we would have to clean up the site. And as we say in the center, every toxic activity known to humankind has taken place in that complex. From 1938 to 1958, we had Al's Gas Station. Al left behind three tanks blanketed with a thick layer of asphalt. We've had not one but two dry cleaners on-site over the last, in the last 40 or 50 years. We have a little bit of an asbestos problem, of course. You might expect that in a nearly 90-year-old building. And it has also been a lawnmower repair place as well as a car detailing site. So we have a few rehabilitation challenges to address. We have been fortunate to receive a significant grant, $850,000 from Eagle, formerly Michigan DEQ, to address these issues. We're eager to get started, but not before we've come to you folks to talk about an Oprah district. Not sure if you'd like me to stop at this point and talk more about the Oprah or kind of continue on.
Go ahead.
So just generally about the development, we estimate that this will be a $10 million development. We will end up with 20,000 square feet of commercial space, 30,000 of residential space. The 29 units will consist of four-studio, 50-in-one-bedroom, and 10 two-bedroom apartments. They are all age-friendly. We participated in the city's age-friendly initiative a couple of years ago. I served as the co-chair of the Housing Subcommittee. We held lots of charrettes, talking with seniors from all over the city, and particularly the east side, about their needs. And one of the things that we have discovered is that seniors have a hard time on the east side finding housing that is both age-friendly and affordable. And so we hope that in many of those 29 units will be occupied by people over the age of 55. The commercial entities that will be taking up residence along the frontage will include an accelerator kitchen for graduates of our incubator kitchen program. Some of you know of that program. It's a five-year-old program providing affordable rental, hourly rental and storage space to entry-level food entrepreneurs and business development support. Many of those folks are ready for the next step, not quite ready for their own bricks and mortar, but ready for, you know, 24/7 access to production space, their own space still in a shared kitchen context. And so four of them have signed memos of understanding to occupy the new accelerator kitchen for which we have received grants from Michigan Good Food Fund and Michigan Department of Ag so that we can build that out and hopefully have it occupied near the start of the year. We are also having conversations with an entity that is very interested in opening a culinary school for juniors and seniors in high school. Our Neighborhood Center is located within about 15 blocks of three high schools. We think it would be pretty easily accessed by young people, high-school-age folks interested in culinary skill development. We're in conversation with some others as well. We have, we're doing Allen Place, not only because the building is deteriorating and has been declared functionally obsolete by the city assessor, but in addition, because it meets four really specific priorities for us. Number one, while we are interested in all the corridors on the east side, we're located on East Kalamazoo, and we believe that Allen Place will further stabilize and strengthen the East Kalamazoo corridor. In addition, we are intent on providing, on addressing at least to some extent, the lack of age-friendly and affordable housing for seniors on the east side. Third, with the addition of the accelerator kitchen and an ISD, a school for high-school-age students, what we're interested in doing is creating a pipeline for a small-scale food processing infrastructure within the block. So a high-school student might spend a couple of years in the culinary school and then opt to go into our incubator kitchen with maximal support and minimal risk. And then, having developed some business skills and perhaps a following and a customer base, will transfer to the accelerator space on the front of the block, still, you know, having easy access to a community of practitioners, and then finally move perhaps to their own bricks and mortar operation and perhaps even on the block. And then finally, we're developing on East Kalamazoo, between Hunter Park and Foster Park, Food Innovation District. The, as many of you know, there are lots of gardening activities in Hunter Park. We cultivate an acre of parkland, in fact, and have a year-round greenhouse and offer lots of gardening education and services to age groups. We have two pretty robust youth programs as well as lots of programs for adults. The Foster Park holds the Gardening Resource Center, a program of the Greater Lansing Food Bank. There are about 10 self-described urban farms in the Urbandale neighborhood. There's a lot related to food happening on that strip of East Kalamazoo that includes as well our farmer's market and food hub. So we are creating a Food Innovation District on the East Kalamazoo that we believe Allen Place will contribute toward. So that's the big dream. And it starts with an Oprah request.
Okay. And what we would be doing is setting the public hearing for the district. And that public hearing would be?
October 14th at 7:00 p.m.
Are there any questions for Joan at this time? Seeing none?
I would move, first, I want to thank Ms. Nelson, Mrs. Nelson, as well as Mr. Lum. They were actually with us at Development and Planning at 4:00 p.m. They agreed to come back tonight to introduce this project to you and to, in case there were questions, to be on hand to actually answer those questions. And I also want to thank Mr. Chris Klein, who was also here at 4:00 p.m. at Development and Planning. We tried to get them out as quickly as possible so they could grab some dinner before coming back. But we certainly appreciate the work that you guys have put forth on this. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. And again, that public hearing for anyone that would like to address it is on October 14th at 7:00 o'clock down here at Council Chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Council.
Councilmember Hussein.
The second item we have coming out of Development and Planning is a resolution to set a public hearing again for October 14th at 7:00 p.m., 10th floor of City Hall. This is in consideration of an obsolete property rehabilitation district certificate. The applicant in this case is Blackboard District LLC. And this is for the property at 1030 South Home Street. This is the Old Home Street School. So a very interesting history. We know that this building was constructed in the 20s. It opened up as a school in 1923. It was shuttered sometime in the 90s. It was purchased in 2007 by Spartan Internet. This body, not this iteration, but this body did approve the district for the Oprah District in 2008. Also, this body approved an Oprah certificate that was repealed last year. We know that this property was sold to Mr. Jeff Dehan and Dimaxian Development. In May of this past year, they've been working on a pathway to reactivation of what is really, I mean, this is a tough property to redevelop. These individuals believe that they have arrived at an appropriate redevelopment for this three-story structure. And one of the things that they are requesting in order to make it work is an Oprah certificate. This would be a 12-year certificate. We do have two members of the entity that is requesting on hand. And again, we want to say how much we appreciate these two as they were also here at Development and Planning at 4:00 p.m. And they have stuck through what has turned out to be a very long council meeting. So without further ado, if you want to present your development, the project, I should say, and then the request for the Oprah certificate.
There we go. Thank you, Adam, and everyone here tonight. I'm Matt McNeil with Dimaxian Development. Dimaxian Development started when Jeff and I began rehabilitating blighted and old obsolete properties with Artist Avenue Lofts. And it's really our love. We love old buildings. We love to make them beautiful again. When the opportunity for the school came up, we chomped a bit for it, not knowing whether or not it would make sense. We just knew that we wanted to make it nice because it's beautiful. What we arrived at is a 40-unit, approximately 40-unit. The architect is still finalizing the specific unit count. Market rate, apartment redevelopment. It would provide a number of temporary jobs from mostly or all local labor, wherever we can source those individuals. We have an onsite or a team of people that we work with regularly. All of them are from the Greater Lansing area. We would try diligently to make sure that everyone that had an opportunity locally was able to bid on the project. What else? The property sits on 2.2 acres of land. Of that land, a large majority of it is green space. We know that it's super important to the neighborhood that whatever the project looks like when it's done, some element of green space remain. We also feel that that's super important, especially living in an apartment, having space to be outside is important for us. So with that, I open it to any questions. I'm running low on e after a dental procedure and the long evening. So I'll field any questions you have.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a question, but I have a comment. This has been a very challenging area in this particular neighborhood. This school sits right in the middle of a neighborhood. It's surrounded by residential neighborhoods. This group has been working with the Neighborhood Association. They have been in contact with the leaders of that group. I have been in contact with them. They are very excited about this project, and it will take an extremely blighted property and bring it up to where it should be. They have made a gentleman's commitment, if I may, to keeping the green space because this is really the only area the children in the neighborhood have to play. And there are a lot of children in this neighborhood. So it is appreciated that they are going to keep green space for the community use and not bar them from being on that property. So as the representative for this ward, and same with the one that came before us, these are both very challenged areas, and it's very exciting for us to have this energy at both of these properties. So thank you.
Are there other questions at this time? Couple of quick questions I have for you is if the district is, if the certificate is approved, when are you looking at starting?
Tentatively, we believe that spring is probably the ideal time to start as we're coming into the winter. Heating a building like this is very prohibitive as it's so big, so.
And what is the length of time that you're?
I believe we have it spec'd. Did, were, Chris, do you know if they received this packet? Were you aware if they did? Okay. Oh, it's up there, sorry. I believe it's June of 2021.
Okay. And then, can you give us any examples of other projects you might have done in Lansing?
Yeah, for sure. So Cherry Hill District Apartments, there's about 75 units there. The majority of them were, obviously, they were previously apartments, so it's not similar in that it's a redevelopment of a different use. But blighted property, you know, detrimental to the rest of the neighborhood. We have done wonders there.
I know you have, that's why.
Thank you, Carol. Yeah, we really care about the neighborhoods that we invest in. Speaking with Mary Beth earlier today, and I asked her if there were any properties that she felt, any single-family homes that she felt needed attention or that had been run down. And in any case, we just, if we enter a neighborhood, we want to be a part of the community and be, do whatever we can to help build it up.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
So again, what we're looking to do is to set a public hearing for October 14th. That would be 7:00 p.m., 10th floor of City Hall. So that being said, I'd move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and you get to go home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Hussein.
Items C and D, we'll take them up respectively, but they do deal with the same piece to the Corridor Improvement Authority. We talked earlier about the establishment of two Corridor Improvement Authorities. In considering Saginaw Street as well as Michigan Avenue, we've been through Phase One, which was the establishment of the Corridor Improvement Authorities for both of those. Those took place in 2009. We have populated those boards. In some instances, we have repopulated those boards. And we are really kind of at Phase Three at this point, where we are looking to, and first, the date would be October 28th, 7:00 p.m., 10th floor of City Hall in terms of the public hearings. But we are at the point where we're going to vet both the development plan as well as the tax increment finance plan for both authorities. So with regards to the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority, we do have, I believe, the board chair with us as well as Mrs. Hannah Bryant from LEAP, who will be discussing the development plan as well as the TIF plan that this body will be vetting.
Good evening.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Luco. I work for the M E D C and am chair of the Saginaw Street Corridor Authority, Improvement Authority, sorry. To keep things short, we have a brief presentation. This kind of does a bit of a twofer for Michigan as the structure of a CIA and the model that is used for the plans. And when you guys are looking at it further, will be one of the same. But they are two very different districts. What we really, oh, here I can. What we really wanted to talk about first was, if you've heard of the CIA's before, and they've obviously come across the agenda today, the one point we just want to bring across is it's not a new tax, doesn't raise taxes. It's reinvesting captured taxes back into the district. As was discussed, the four authorities that are either being established or have been established are all in areas that are of a great sight to the city in terms of people see them, they drive through them, and they really reflect, if not accurately, the status of the community. And that's one of the things why it's important to reinvest in our communities like this or our corridors as such. Again, we do have a couple of our authority members here in the audience, and I really appreciate them not letting me run out of the room, so. Thank you. A brief, oops, I think I missed a line. The corridor goes from the Point, I believe it's Stanley, all the way to Pennsylvania, runs down the center line 500 feet of Saginaw. It's a pretty big district. It encompasses what you can consider three or four separate distinct places between the tail end or north end, I guess, of the stadium district, LCC, the traditional downtown or traditional commercial space that existed in and around MLK, and then also the Point, which in itself has become its own community. The history, as Councilmember Hussein alluded to, has been a long one. These were- These were established for both Michigan and Saginaw in 2009. Again, the on and off of reappointing members to these authorities has been due in large part to the economic downturn and just the likelihood of their use being mitigated just from the lack of private investment and private interest in those markets. We have, regardless of that, seen a lot of other investment and activity for volunteer groups. There was a Vista program. They had a crowd-raising project for the prosperity statue, and again, some of the other local businesses still, despite maybe what some other, how others would see the corridor, are still investing greatly in the corridor, and we really see the authority as a tool to continue their investment and giving them more tools to work with. The big thing we wanted to look at when we took a look at the plan again, as it was originally drafted up in 2015, was do we still line up with the city's master plan in terms of the use and transit for the corridor? We felt like this was a best starting point as so much citizen participation and outreach has gone out through the comprehensive plan process, and we see that, again, this was a very well-regarded plan from the MEDC standpoint for our RRC program, that they looked at it and said, "This is a great plan. It was well-paid for." It talks about a lot of the planning best practices, that people wanted to see the corridor in this mixed-use urban environment, but that still gave a good frontage to the desirable neighborhoods that really show off that there is more than just these, in some cases, running-down buildings in the corridor, and really would give more to look From a transit standpoint, which is one of the biggest concerns as well, I know the two-way conversion is brought up, and that from this plan, it was looked at to implement a road diet. There was a 2008 road study that was still inconclusive on whether a road or a two-way road conversion would meet MDOT standards. Again, this is a state trunk line, so there is always that as a consideration as a part of the plan. Working with the state would be one of the major hurdles to doing any other changes, regardless of it's a, you know, restriking wouldn't come through the state, regardless whether it was a two-way conversion or not. The rest of the plan really wanted to talk about the transit-oriented design, the complete streets, and the traditional neighborhood design that it was a little strange to see in our surveys that we had go out to the public, that they use some of the same terminology. So, it sounded like a lot of people were very well in know of what was good design or best practice for urban planning and development, and a lot of people, if they didn't know the terminology, spoke about a lot of the same things of wanting to see the Saginaw corridor become more walkable, more transit-friendly. I believe in the DNP Committee mentioning the 8 to 80 as initiative for growing and living in place where you would be content with your 80-year-old grandmother walking your 8-year-old child down the road and being safe with that. And that's something that we see as a vision that, one, the city's master plan already supports, and that we have put into our plan as well for development. The Main Street approach, which I'll talk about again just a little bit more detail so that Michigan doesn't have to, because we use the same model, it is a nationally renowned model. The state runs the Main Street program, and it is used by hundreds of communities across the nation. This is a four buckets, basically, of the way to look at the corridors, and this is also used for DDAs, or Downtown Development Authorities. The first piece of economic vitality, so you will see that we have a section of narrative in our plan and projects talking to economic vitality or restructuring. This is really your business incentives, the same types of things you hear for, be it Oprah, historic tax credits, Lytech, anything like that. This is where you would see a lot of those types of projects. Actually, let's go to this. In the near term for Saginaw, as it is a less of a tax pool in terms of commercial corridor revenue from the Michigan Avenue, you'll see that a lot of ours is more incremental and grassroots in terms of near-term projects as the initial tax revenue isn't nearly as high, but that's okay. It's a different type of community. I love our community for it. It's a good place to be, but it is a smaller step. So, we do look at some of the things of getting started with assessing the field for the economic vitality of the region, some of that in marketing and creating an inventory of businesses so that we can better speak to the economic condition. The design of the corridor, this really talks about, the big thing that you think about with the Saginaw Street is Saginaw. It's the physical design of the place, again, the one-way, two-way conversion, those types of things. This we'll really see as pursuing some beginning changes and trying to improve the streetscape and improve ridership. Again, really encouraging to do some more research and studies on terms of transit-oriented design and on increasing bus ridership, and also encouraging people to be able to walk and bike to work and live somewhere close without having to rely on an automobile. Those two are really like the physical components of the Main Street plans that you'll see or the corridor plans that you'll see, really talking about the brick and mortar in the street, streetscapes. Organization is really both about the internal operations of the authorities, but also things that you see like the Old Town Commercial Association, really the organizing of volunteerism and really creating that sense of community in the corridor. Again, the near term for us, there's some of this, again, talking about the reappointing again and again. The first thing that I noticed was we definitely needed an onboarding for our authorities so that in the event that inevitably people do leave again, we can bounce back quicker. Promotions and marketing, again, this is more like an OTCA, more of talking about promoting events, talking about local businesses and helping them reach the markets that they're interested, and really making sure that the authority and what it's doing is being communicated as well as it can be to the community as a whole. That was pretty quick, or I think it was, so I'm going to turn it over to Hannah to talk about how we plan on financing these opportunities.
Which, he's, the main part of this plan will be the TIF, the Tax Increment Financing, but there are other things we can start doing, applying for grants, the partnerships, which will lean on the TIF as sort of, you know, we finally have this money coming in, since it is smaller increments, but, let's see, so this is just the list. And like Jonathan mentioned, you know, this is not creating a new tax. It's not increasing taxes. It's really allowing us to capture that increase in commercial property taxes over time and reinvest it right back into the community. It's able to make those improvements right along that corridor, and hopefully, this will be able to leverage other partnerships, public-private partnerships, and really start making those improvements. This is just a simple diagram, which we also created this one showing the, a better, I guess, slope, you could say, where 2019, if it's established, the plan would be taking 2019, and it's a 15-year plan, so then it would end 2034. And then this is just kind of showing the exact, the first three years, what we would be able to capture. It is a small amount, but it's something that we can start at least having that in our bucket, being able to gather more investments, being able to apply for grants. So, it shows the first three years from Lansing side, but then it's also showing that it's a dollar match, basically, for all of taxes captured, and then it's laying out what we would have total after the 15 years.
Do you have to take any questions or comments?
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Hussein.
Before I move the resolution, I'd like to recognize, it wasn't until you actually acknowledged that there were other board members in the audience that I saw Claire Core out there. I don't know if there are other individuals that are actually part of this board. Thank you so much.
You should stand up.
Absolutely. Tiffany Dowling, yes, absolutely. Please stand up and be recognized. This is really, really important work in moving forward, one of our critical east-westbound corridors, and we really appreciate everything that you all have done to get us to this point. With that being said, I would move, again, the resolution. This would be setting a public hearing in consideration of the development and finance plan for the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority, and that would be for October 28th at 7:00 PM.
All right, we have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed. Councilmember Hussein passes unanimously.
All right. And the next one, we have two individuals that we promised we would excuse after this next presentation. We have both Jonathan Lum and Joan Nelson with us. They will be joined, again, by Hannah Bryant, and they will be discussing the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority Development Plan and Tax Increment Finance Plan. Looks like we have Yvette Collins with us as well. Thanks for being with us.
I'm the chair of the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority. I do have Yvette Collins here, and Joan is still in the audience here, so she is still joining us in spirit. She had her big show earlier, so she thought she'd let some of others take the limelight here. So, much of what Jonathan, the previous Jonathan, explained is going to be very similar to the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority. We too have been around for 10 years, so this is really a culmination of work that has progressed, sometimes at a snail's pace, but as with any great thing, there have been many fits and starts, and now we feel like we've gotten the momentum here to come and ask for this TIF to be able to be presented at a public hearing. The goals are really to beautify and help create a more cohesive, welcoming corridor, and we very much want to be able to help provide support for many of the other private and public investments that are taking place here. So, our intention is to be able to enhance other projects that are already going to be happening as we work to reach our goals. Our first order of business is really going to be to having a staff member, a part-time staff, that can be in charge of moving this forward, and that will be the key first step. As I'm sure all of you know, if there's nobody in charge of something, it won't get done. So, when we are able to have the initial funding set up, that staff person can then go after grants and start taking over some of the responsibilities that LEAP has been able to provide us for support throughout the last decade. One of the big projects that we have been able to take on was the crowdfunding project that we worked with the MEDC on to do the, under the bridge at the Michigan Avenue 127 intersection, and we wanted to try to do that to make a big, bright, visible project, create a gateway between East Lansing and Lansing, and really start to draw attention to what could be done with the types of funding and projects that we want to undertake. So, that was completed in 2017. That project alone took about two years to be able to work through the multiple municipalities and maintenance agreements and MDOT, and going through that process. So, you know, so great things do take time, and we anticipate with the district going, with the TIF going into place in this district, that we would be able to continue to make great things happen along here. I don't know how much of the details you want me to go into, but I know it's been a long night, so I figured I'd just let you guys ask questions, and I'm happy to go into more detail on anything throughout the packet.
Maybe if you could go over the financing so that that section of it?
Sure. So, the district is set up from Pure Marquette through the East Lansing border. It does go through that short section of Lansing Township that is to the north along the corridor, actually, I'm sorry, I think there's sections on both the north and south of Lansing Township. The TIF would only affect the commercial properties along the corridor there, and in the first year, we anticipate that we will be able to capture approximately, between the city of Lansing and all the other taxing authorities, about $12,700 that we would, like, apply towards being able to hire a staff member.
Okay. Are there any other questions at this time? Councilmember Hussein.
Before I move it, I just want to make sure that Mrs. Bryant or Mrs. Collins, that you don't have anything to add.
No, and it's the same thing with the Saginaw TIF. I'll have to say, you know, same thing, doesn't increase your taxes, no new tax. They do have significantly more money that they would be able to match throughout the 15 years, but same thing, trying to find that partnership and that grant, so.
Councilmember Washington.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to speak about this Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority. These folks have been working doggedly for many years to get this moving forward, and we appreciate that because as we go forward, perhaps with other corridor improvement authorities, you set the pace, so we appreciate that very much. And as we discussed in Development and Planning, it's important to know that we all understand that there's been a lot of energy on Michigan Avenue, but there are still challenges that are not going to be met by this, and this authority with this capture will be able to, as Mr. Lum said, provide the cohesiveness with the projects and going forward with that investment. So, I just want to say thank you, and as the public hearing goes forward, I'm hoping we get a lot of positive response.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hussein.
All right. So, I would move the resolution to set a public hearing in consideration of the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan for October 28th at 7:00.
We have a motion. Are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to the order of ordinances for introduction. Councilmember Washington introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing Codified Ordnances by amending Chapter 288, Sections 288.10 and 288.14, and adding 288.20 to correct the names of various city departments and specify the minimum requirements for the director of each department.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. As the city clerk said, this is mostly to clean up the language. Departments have been changed in names. We went from Planning and Neighborhood Development to Economic Development and Planning, Director of Human Resources instead of Personnel and Training, et cetera. It was basically to clean up the language, and in addition to that, we do have the addition of the Director of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement, and so we have added just the minimum requirements for that position. Thank you.
And this is setting the public hearing for?
I'm sorry, I don't have the date of the public hearing.
October 14th.
The public hearing, this will be for setting the public hearing for October 14th.
All right, we have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to repeal Chapter 288, Section 288.18 to eliminate the minimum qualifications for the Director of Management Services as no such position exists within the city. The ordinance is read a second time by its title. It was reported from the Committee on General Services and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't feel a need to repeat what the clerk has just said, and with that, I would move the ordinance.
All right, it's a roll call. Councilmember?
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yays, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted.
And?
I would like to ask for immediate effect. Long night.
We have a motion on immediate effect. All those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That is open to anything related to city government, and the yellow sheet in the back is about to be picked up, so if you do want to speak, you need to jump up right now. And with that, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move that all items be considered as being read in full and the proper referrals be made by you.
Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we have a letter from the city clerk regarding the minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Letters from the mayor regarding Z6 2019, the rezoning of a parcel on Large Street from G1 Business to H Light Industrial District.
Development and planning.
Act 14 2019, easement acquisition Northwest Corner of Miller and Relais for a traffic signal.
Development and planning.
Brownfield Plan Number 77, 500-block redevelopment. Brownfield Plan Number 77, 500-block redevelopment project at 501 South Capitol and 520 South Washington.
Development and planning.
Grant acceptance and memorandum of agreement, EPA Brownfields Assessment Coalition Grant and Lansing Brownfields Coalition.
Ways and Means and Eternal Auditor.
Appointment, Sean Hammond is the fourth ward member of the Park Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Public Service Committee.
Communications and petitions, a claim appeal, Gail Miller for $558.40 in board-up fees at 2705 Gibson.
General Services.
And notice of an application for the Farmland and Open Space Preservation Program from DeWitt Township for the Lonelyer Family Properties LLC.
Committee of Hall.
And we are to remarks by councilmembers.
Are there any councilmember remarks? Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, thank you. We heard a lot of comments tonight about the noise waiver for the Red Cedar Development Project, and I have a couple ideas that I'd like to pass along to General Services, because I know you have to reconsider this on Monday at 5:00. Subsection C of 654.11 of Lansing Codified Ordinances allows any permit granted pursuant to this section may be subject to and prescribe any conditions, limitations, or requirements which council deems necessary to minimize adverse effects upon the community, persons within the community, or the surrounding neighborhood. I would encourage General Services to consider conditions under this section, allowing for construction between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, seven days a week, including holidays, and further ask that General Services consider dividing the question to consider the waivers separately, sending both back to the full council, allowing us to consider each independently and possibly lay the 24-hour waiver on the table to be approved when necessary, when notified by the developer. I believe this satisfies a lot of the concerns we heard, a lot of the concerns I think some of us share with the feedback we've received, but also comports with city law and city charter. And satisfies, excuse me, satisfies the notification requirements under the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Are there other councilmember comments at this time? Councilmember Garcia, and then Councilmember Hussein.
ZA.
What? Garza, what did I say? I'm sorry.
I get that all the time, Carol. It's a ZA.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to make a comment that the, getting the Red Cedar Project prepared for the vertical construction, it was, to my knowledge, it's all union, it's a union contractor bid for the job, and it wouldn't be very lucrative for them to do the work past normal business hours because they're gonna be having to pay time and a half. So that's something that wasn't brought up, and I wanted to bring up just to mention, so, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
I just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive some correspondence pertaining to Brownfield 77. This Brownfield pertains to the 500-block redevelopment project at 501 South Capitol Avenue and 520 South Washington Avenue. The, the letter is from, I believe it is from Jim Deline, it's an email, and he has some concerns regarding the eligible activities, the tax capture. We will be taking this letter into consideration at Development and Planning, and then we'll also acknowledge it when we consider it before this body.
All right, thank you. Are there any other councilmember comments? I see none. Mr. Mayor? No comments, okay.
Okay, we are to public comments. We have Linda Appeling followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hello, for the record, my name is Linda Appeling, and I am here representing myself today. And what I wish to talk about is the issue of social equity. As I understand this matter, it is to allow persons convicted of crimes involving marijuana to apply for licenses at a reduced fee. A implementation, and it was probably clearly stated previously, it did reference black individuals. I find this particular matter insulting and racist on its face. No reason exists to grant anyone a reduced fee. Such an action is a slap in the face to persons of color who have raised their children, and those children did not go to jail, nor were they convicted of being involved with drugs. Why should I or any other person of color support such an action? This assertion is simply a hook to gather support from persons of color. The entire provision is specious and should be rejected. If you truly wish to help someone who has been wrongfully incarcerated, set up grants for school attendance that they would be eligible for, supply counseling services, reimburse them for money they have had to pay to the state for a GPS on their legs, various services and attendance to required classes. Again, I do feel that that particular provision in terms of social equity is racist on its face, and it is a slap in my face.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, and then Belinda Fitzpatrick.
And touching on that same topic just briefly, I think it's very interesting that certain members of this council seem to feel that they are better informed than the State of Michigan as to whether or not the City of Lansing meets the threshold to qualify for designation as a city that's been adversely impacted. I think the state sets the standards, the state knows what they're doing, and if they don't find Lansing to be adversely impacted, then I would say it is not. And I would not like to see us open ourselves up to potential litigation in any way, whether it's under one form or another. And second, on Brownfields, just in general, Brownfields, Oprahs, Tiffas, I know there's another one coming down the pike soon for Lake Trust. On the face, all these projects seem very good. I mean, they, they look great, and I would support them, providing they supported themselves. I'm really, really, really tired of us carrying the weight. If a project is worth doing, it's worth being funded by the developer, not by the citizens. We are being strangled. Our, our fire and our police and our code and our roads and our streets and all of these other essential functions and infrastructure are being strangled in perpetuity by analysts, Tiffas, and Oprahs and Brownfields. Yes, they're not new taxes, and yes, they aren't raising taxes, but they are taking taxes that would otherwise go to these things and diverting them. If something is worth doing, let the person doing it fund it. I can't go and apply for a home loan or a car loan or any other situation. I can't go apply for, you know, something to fix my property up and not carry the weight myself. I can't go and say to the bank, well, you know, I'm gonna fund it 80%, but the city's gonna kick in 20. Doesn't happen. It shouldn't be any different for the developers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Belinda Fitzpatrick.
Belinda Fitzpatrick, 224 South Holmes Street. My neighbors have pushed me to come down here. You know, I've known some of you since before there were cell phones, but Unity Spiritual Center of Lansing does not care. This is what my neighbors have said to me repeatedly. They say to me, they don't care, you know, and I'm starting to get the impression too. They give a lot of lip service to caring. They say, love and light, but they don't walk their talk about a, well, they hit a fire, and the fledge down the street has offered to let them have their services down there, but they still think that they need this 60-foot trailer. A week ago, they brought in a 60-foot trailer, they parked it on residentially zoned lots where they tore down houses, and you know, frankly, I've never been for red tagging, but I think this is not just an eyesore, it's a safety hazard. I think you need to CYA and get the city engineer out there and check how that thing has been set up, because it's not going to take a tornado to flip it over. When it flips over, it's gonna end up in my backyard. Those are residentially zoned lots. It's not legal for them to bring in a 60-foot trailer the size of a three-bedroom mobile home. They don't need it. They don't need it. When they said they were gonna bring in a trailer, I thought they were bringing in a 20-foot trailer for the, the Reverend. But it's not just that it's an eyesore. Now, from my kitchen, it looks like a freight train. It is very imposing. When I go in my backyard, it looks like a freight train, but you know what? Let's get to the safety issue here. I took these building classes that my father took me to. That ground is not safe for that trailer. You get people in there, that thing's, they have to just tip over. I think you should go out and red tag it. I've always been against the red tagging when people are trying to fix up a residential property and they want to live there, but, like my neighbor says to me repeatedly, Unity Spiritual Center of Lansing does not care. They don't care. They just, their president sent me a text that, I'm just choosing to not be happy. No, I have a genuine safety concern, and I'm tired of them violating the law about those residential lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I know she has. Oh, she was the.